James, will you need to be host to set up the interpretation channels?
Yeah, someone just passed host off to me though, so I'm all good.
Good morning, good afternoon, Eric, Jean-Cutie here, just doing a sound check.
We can hear you, councillor.
Hi, everybody. Eric, can I just confirm, do we have quorum? We can get started in 30 seconds?
Chair, the one technical requirement is the streaming on the French channel. I'm just checking in to see the status on that.
Okay.
And get back shortly. Okay.
Maybe while we're waiting, councillor McKenney, the notice of motion that we have been working on, we're going to treat that as a reporting out from the subcommittee as well, okay? So that way we'll do it here today where we don't normally do notices, okay?
Perfect, yes, I have them. Thanks, thanks, Chair.
Perfect.
Chair, we have the the English channel live at the moment and we're working on French, but we could proceed with the meeting if you wish.
Okay, if that's okay with everybody, let's do that. So, good afternoon and welcome to this afternoon's special meeting of the Transit Commission. I have received regrets from Commissioner Wright Gilbert and Commissioner Williams that they will not be able to attend today. Could the commission coordinator please proceed with the roll call?
Commissioner Brockington.
Here.
Commissioner Caracato.
Here.
Commissioner Gower.
Here.
Commissioner Kavanaugh.
Here.
Commissioner McKenney.
Present.
Commissioner Olson.
Here.
Commissioner Tierney.
Present.
Commissioner Williams. Commissioner Wright Gilbert. Vice Chair Cloutier.
Present.
Chair Hubley.
Here.
You have quorum, Chair.
Thank you very much, Eric. So, folks, before we get into this, I just want to go over the format, but everybody, just so we're clear. As you may know, this is a meeting at which the Transit Commission's portion of the budget will be received, tabled, and referred for consideration by the commission at our next meeting, which will be Wednesday, November 17. Today, we will be receiving a high-level overview of the Transit Services budget from the general manager of the Transit Service Department, Mrs. Renee Amalcar. And as we're only tabling the budget, we will not be receiving public delegations at today's meeting. We will also not be considering any motions on these items at this meeting. The opportunity for both submissions and motions will be at our meeting of November 17. Members may ask questions to staff, but I remind you that they should limit their questions to a high level as opportunities to examine the budget in detail will be provided on November 17. So to start the meeting, is there any declarations of interest? Seeing none, we'll now receive a presentation of the 2022 Transit Budget from our new GM. So whenever you're ready, Renee?
Thank you, Chair. Bonjour tout le monde. I'm very happy to be here this morning with you. So with your permission, Chair and consels and commissioners, I will I will go over the presentation in French. So we have simultaneous translation, so it will be it will be better for me and I think it will be better for you here still. So thank you, thank you in advance. Avant de commencer, j'aimerais beaucoup remercier bien sûr mon équipe. Moi, je suis dans ma troisième semaine avec Ossie Transpôts. C'est très passionnant cette entreprise parce que je découvre des gens extraordinaires qui veulent vraiment avancer pour l'expérience de l'expérience client. Alors, ce budget, je ne voudrais pas me l'approprier étant donné que ça a été vraiment travaillé avant mon arrivée par une équipe très dynamique. Donc, je remercie toute mon équipe, toute l'équipe aussi de Wendy bien sûr qui a contribué et en particulier Pat qui est avec nous qui va pouvoir m'aider à répondre à diverses questions. Mais maybe we can present the presentation on our screen, please? Thank you. Donc, next, la prochaine page, next page. Donc, si on parle pour le draft du budget de 2022, dans un premier temps, on a plusieurs hypothèses qui sont bien entendues émises, dont entre autres que le budget va se faire selon que la chalandage de 2022 va être au niveau de 82% si on compare à notre chalandage pré-pandémique, donc c'est-à-dire avec l'année 2019. Aussi, l'augmentation des tarifs va se traduire par un 2.5% d'augmentation en 2022. Et si on regarde aussi au niveau des économies générées au niveau de la réduction de services temporaires, donc on a 11 millions à ce niveau-là, qui n'est pas récurrent, mais c'est 11 millions pour 2022. Et finalement, sachez que tel que c'était déjà établi, on va maintenir le gel sur le laisser passer communautaire. On peut aller à l'autre page. Si on continue, l'inflation aussi et tout l'ajustement au coût de la vie.
Inflation and cola have been taken into account. There'll be no service expansion for the train, for buses, or for rail transport either. So the current service level will be retained and analyze costs to cover WSIB costs, for example, or provided legislative breaks for federal regulated staff to cover the cost of of the September 30th federal holiday. All that is a total of $5.2 million. Then the increases from maintenance of fare control and other software support, $3.9 million for that. If we look at the next page now, in terms of the the budget target for 2022, $20.9 million. So here we can see a breakdown of that $20.9 million. Service maintenance, $31.8 million. Growth investments. Despite the fact that I said earlier that we would not be expanding service, we already have the resources necessary for the train. So for that, we provided for $1 million and $11.9 million in savings, which should cover the the additional expenses. So that means that in terms of the operating budget, we have a total of $20.9 million, but within that target. Now if you look at the next page, now across the across the board here, what does that mean for our clients, for our customers? There'll be an across-the-board increase of 2.5%. This means that the monthly adult pass will be up by $3. And the single ride adult fare will go up by 10 cents from $3.60 to $3.70. Will maintain the freeze for community pass and the the equi-pass fares as well. And also the discounts for kids, youth, and seniors. There's also good news in terms of the customer experience. Now adults in 202022 will be able to pay by tapping a credit card on all buses and at all old train stations. The daily maximum charge for adult fares can be paid by by credit card as well. That's new for 2022. So this is good news for our clients, our riders, and we're very, very proud of that. Now, we've looked at the city targets and we looked at the the breakdown in terms of how it'll affect riders. We look at the next page now. Unfortunately, there are costs linked to COVID-19. It continues to take a toll on our budget. So we're anticipating a reduction in fare and advertising revenues of 41.3 million. We're also estimating a lower provincial gas tax funding to to lower gasoline sales, $7.7 million. And as you know, we've had to increase our cleaning during the pandemic. And that means also that we have $11.6 million for that. So that's a total of $60.6 million. Now, all that's linked to costs stemming from COVID-19 or stemming from costs for things that we should have done that we can't do. Now, if we look at the next page, it's very important for us, for the federal and provincial government, to provide that funding to cover 2022 lost revenue. If that's not possible, that means we'll have to we'll have to take steps. That's all been provided for by our team to make sure that we don't find ourselves in a situation of a shortfall of $60.6 million. Now, one of the mitigation measures is the following, is to move more slowly, perhaps to put off or to defer capital investments and discretionary spending and leaving some vacant positions unfilled. And then the worst scenario, Plan C would kick in. Now, this is this was approved by the council in April 2021. And that would provide for an increase in fares or error service reduction, which of course is something we want to avoid. So that's basically everything in terms of the operational budget. We can perhaps move on to to the capital budget itself. We look at the next page. Here, there's some good news also for riders, $55 million to replace 74 40-foot buses, diesel buses that we intend to replace with electric buses. That's good news for our riders because electric buses are cleaner, much more comfortable as well. $17.4 million to invest it to support the operational transition to stage two light rail. We also have $9.6 million to invest in improvements to transit station and bus stops. Now, this is with a view to increasing or improving the experience of riders. And 8 million, of course, to ensure Wi-Fi and cellular service for customers is available in stage two expansions and $500,000 to invest in accessibility improvements to transitway and old train stations as well. Next page. $625,000 for proposed a proposed marketing campaign to encourage ridership post-pandemic. We have to try and attract those riders who used to use the network before the pandemic and who have left it since. This will allow us to attract new riders as well. We don't just want to attract those who used to use the network back. We have to go and find new riders as well. There's also $11 million provided for for customer service initiatives. You already know that this is these are temporary items. So this is something that's carried over year to year, $11 million for that. And finally, $250,000 for technology to improve customer-facing systems, our website and things like that. So that really is the capital budget in a nutshell. So perhaps we could talk to you a bit now on the next page about where we're at the zero emission buses. Now, as reported to Transit Commission in 2021, the zero emission buses program contemplates conversion of up to 450 buses between 2022 and 2027. At a total program cost of almost $1 billion that the city has committed to making this cost-neutral, not more expensive than the diesel buses. So we have to find new funding sources. And of course, that's one of those sources is the Canada Infrastructure Bank, the CIB. Now, based on the information that we currently have, we could be eligible for 40% of costs, up to $400 million. That would be a loan which would have to be paid back over the 15-year lifespan of the buses. As you know, every 15-year buses, 15 years buses are replaced. Part of the money would come from Infrastructure Canada. That's a good source. We could get 35 to 50% of cost from them. That's good news. Because there's money that we won't have to pay back. So that's that's a good thing, very positive, and we'll try to maximize that amount. And of course, the remaining funding will come from the city capital program, ensuring net zero impact to the city. Now, the federal funding sources are not included in 2022 draft budget. This information is just for your information. Because what we're doing is undertaking a huge transformation progress. It's a lovely project, a good project for our consumers and riders as well. Look at the next page now. Zero emission buses, once again. Now, conversations are go we're going well with Infrastructure Canada before the election, but that put a break on our discussions. Of course, the discussions will pick up again very, very soon. We've been we've been talking to the bank as well, the Infrastructure Bank, and currently there's a preliminary funding of 2 million that's been approved for us to do offset planning and development work as well. You should also know that the city has filed its declaration of interest in applying for the subsidy that we need to move forward with the electrification project. We're waiting impatiently from a response from Infrastructure Canada. Next page. Let's pick up on the operating budget again. Here we have a summary. So we're 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 able to actually live with the $20.9 million because we've been able to make savings on the base budget and revenues as well. But we need $60.6 million to cover costs linked to COVID-19. And we do hope really that we will have a positive response to our application. So that's the end of the presentation. I hope it was clear for you all. And my team are here. Are here to answer any questions.
Commissioner Olson?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Madame Amalcar, thank you very much for your presentation. Just one question at this at this moment. You said that the budget was based on or predicated on an assumption that ridership would go back to 82% of normal, which seems a very precise figure. And, Mr. Chair, I don't know if this is a question better answered at the regular meeting, but just curious how that number was arrived at and whether sensitivity analyses have been done if in case the the ridership does not go back to those levels, but is at 70% of normal or 50% of normal?
The answer is yes. Can I, Chair? Yes?
Yes, please.
Yeah, thank you. The answer is yes. We we have discussion, I had discussed discussed with Pat and his team to to try to to do those, you know, scenarios, pessimistic, optimistic. But we all we think that we'll be able to go till 82% because actually the government in Quebec City, not here yet, but you know, they're remotely worked is not will not an obligation anymore. And people can go out. And so we think that probably the ridership will increase. Pat, if I forgot something, you can add any time for sure. Thank you.
Thanks. Thanks, Renee. So, Mr. Chair, it's based on starting the year at starting the year 2022 at about 60%. We will we will see how we do in October. We, as you may remember from the last meeting, we ended September at about 45% of normal ridership, so quite a bit higher than we had been anytime previously in the last couple of years. So that's based on starting the year at about 60%, ending the year at close to normal. And yes, of course, we've done calculations for all levels in between, but in the end, you know, the budget is based on something, and but it's very clear that if ridership is lower than that because of a slower return or because of any other public health restrictions that need to come into place, then the gap will be larger and the need for federal provincial funding would be larger as well.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. So next up is councillor Brockington, please. We'll we'll take the members of the commission first.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you for the presentation. My question is, I I want to get into the budget in depth, and I don't think at the next Transit Commission meeting, that is sort of an appropriate use of time. I want to have some time with senior staff before that meeting. Are you available to meet one-on-one with councillors to get into the budget and ask very specific questions? Talk about your estimates, how you generated those estimates. Do you have time set up for members of the commission who would like that opportunity?
Go ahead, Mr. Amalcar.
Yeah. I would say yes, we're we're always available for you. So, yeah.
Okay, it's just to do that at the Transit Commission in five minutes, it's just not possible. And so I'd like some time. I'll reach out. I appreciate that, Chair, and I appreciate Commissioner Olson's question. We had an estimate in 2021 of 70% ridership. We were about half that in reality. So I think for us to understand the ridership estimates is very important, the thinking that goes behind that. So thank you, Chair.
Good. Thank you, councillor. So next up is Commissioner Caracato, please.
Thanks. Est-ce que je peux poser ma question en français?
Can I ask my question in English? Of course. Actually, in French. Yes, no problem. Go ahead. You're talking about capital investments. Where where do we see it in the 2021 budget?
Isabel, if she is here, would know the best.
Just to confirm, you're looking for the 2021 investments in capital as a comparison to what we were including in 2022. And those would be available online. The 2021 budget is available. And the details for the capital submissions from last year are also available there.
So I was asking more specifically where they captured in this year's budget? Or are they?
So this year, we're what it is, it's a request for additional authority in 2022. So anything approved in 2021 would not show up again in 2022, but there is a report that shows work in progress. We call it our WIP report, and that is included in the 2022 budget.
Okay, thanks. And then my second question is, and maybe I missed it on the slides, but the fare increase 2.5%. What is that in monetary value if we're, you know, using that 82% ridership over the?
I don't know if I understood the question, but the the 2.5%, it's it's means that for 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 an adult pass, it will increase by $3 per year, per month, sorry. And then.
If I can add to that, the, the presentation showed that it was a total of five point four million dollars more that would come in during the year.
Okay, yeah, that's what I was looking for. Thanks. That's all my questions.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner. And, uh, next up is Counselor Fleury.
There, Mr. Chair, talling between screens here. Uh, I, again, I, I will have more budget question. I, I would, uh, like, uh, Counselor Brockington, um, would encourage the O C team to do the rounds so that we could properly engage on roots in, in particular communities and, and better understanding of that. But, but for the spirit of today, high level, I guess I, I have two questions. Maybe one following, uh, the first intervention, which was, um,
So today, we were talking about ridership. You're, in your budget, what percentages did you use to establish your budget? I, I want to understand your, your provisions. So we take for account that in twenty twenty two will be at what percentages in twenty twenty two? And this analysis, I mean, this eighty two percent we're taking at one point, because we really want to understand what you presented. When we're looking at ridership for twenty twenty two, we have an estimation of about eighty two percent. So we will, I, we know that our ridership is start, started to grow in September twenty twenty one. We will not reach one hundred percent of the pre-pandemic ridership. So on average, we think we're going to be able to get eighty two percent of ridership at the pre-pandemic levels. Now, when we don't have the L R T running, right now, it's not the case. When we're thinking about ridership, did you take into account this possibility? Because we have a lower ridership when the train is not working. We hope that the L R T will be back and working properly. But if one of the transportation mode is not available, people will possibly use their car. We hope that we will be able to offer all the model services needed, including L R T. So in your eighty two percent ridership, you're assuming a full system exact, complete services. Okay, in one of the slides, you talked about an eleven million in terms of service reduction, the eleven point six million dollars. It's, it's kind of scary when you talk about service reduction. I agree with you. In fact, right now, we have some savings. Because everyone, we have the COVID nineteen.
So that's why I said that the money's not recurring is really a situation which is linked to the pandemic more specifically.
Began operation, the service reductions were made in June this year and have been in place since then. These are the reductions such as the temporary suspension of some of the direct to downtown, um, connection routes, the temporary shortening of some routes where they parallel others, and the temporary reduction of, uh, some routes which run primarily to serve downtown office workers uh, down to half hour service. Those were all, uh, put in place in, in June. In the, because they were in effect for half of, uh, this year, they saved five and a half million dollars approximately. Because they'll be in place for all of next year. They'll save eleven million dollars in a full year.
So, so what's presented is a continued service reduction as per the, the June implementation is basically what you're presenting to us now.
That's correct, as, as we had advised in March.
Okay. Okay, uh, Mr. Chair, just in the spirit of high level questions, that completes, uh, my, uh, my questions for now. But I, I would like, uh, to meet with O C and obviously we'll participate in the, uh, the tabling of the budget and discussions in coming weeks.
That's great, Counselor Fleury. Thank you. So next up is Counselor Kavanaugh, please.
Well, welcome, Ms. Emelkar. I'm looking forward to meeting with you next week. Thank you very much.
I want to ask about ridership as well. And my question is, well, first of all, I think eighty two is very vicious. But I, I want to know if it's based on full, uh, monthly passes. Because, uh, I guess I, I'm, I'm suspecting, uh, people will not go every day. So, um, so it makes it very complicated, um, because maybe people are going to go like two or three times a week to work instead of, uh, needing a monthly pass. And, um, how does that affect the calculations if that is, if there is a hybrid model for, for the government, uh, our primary employer here?
Thank you for your question, question. Uh, this is a good question. I don't know. It's, uh, Isabel or Pat can help me regarding that.
I, I can say a few words. It's based on a gradual, a gradual return to, uh, all of the activities that we would have seen pre-pandemic, whether it's, uh, office work, people attending schools, people attending universities, people going out for other reasons. Of course, we cannot know what is going to happen. We can't know what the public health situation is going to be. We can't know what different employers will choose, and we can't know what individual people who, um, work at those organizations will choose. Uh, what we can do is put, uh, as we said to, in answer to an earlier question, we can look at several alternatives, several, um, I think, Counselor Olson called it sensitivity testing. And, uh, see that we're ready in case the ridership is higher and see that we're ready in case the ridership is lower. And I think, uh, I think we can show that we are ready for either eventuality. Uh, because there is no way of knowing what ridership will be fourteen months from now.
Okay, so in terms of what you've calculated as eighty two percent, uh, it's, what is, is that, is it based on?
It's, so, uh, it's based on, um, us, you know, uh, it's based on the fact that we were at forty five percent in September. So ending at, starting the year, starting twenty twenty, sixty percent of normal seems achievable, seems that it could occur. And it's based on ending the year at a hundred percent of ridership and with a, you know, a gradual return. Uh, it's, it's, it is a number only to build the budget around. It's not a prediction of, um, you know, it's not, it's not a guarantee of any sort. It's a number to build a budget on so that we know that we've got enough transit service running. If ridership is higher and we have enough, uh, we know how we're going to cope with the financial situation if fare revenue is lower.
Okay, thank you. Now, my question was primarily on how we predicted it, and I, I don't expect you to be a suzzer. But, uh, just wanted to know how that number was arrived in. Uh, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Um, if, Pat, if I, I could follow up a question with you here that, uh, one of the Commissioners just brought to my attention. Um, the, the media is taking the comparison of the single day pass, uh, cost of the single day pass, and they're comparing us to other major cities. If my memory is correct, the, we don't do a lot of single day passes. The majority of our ridership have other passes, correct?
The majority, um, are monthly passes. That's how most people pay their fare. Um, that has gone down a little bit during the pandemic for the reasons that Counselor Kavanaugh mentioned.
Right.
But normally, and our, our ridership is made up of, of monthly passes. Some people, um, people who are traveling only occasionally, um, would pay, uh, the single ride fares.
Okay, thank you. Now, do we have a comparison between, uh, the top cities and ourselves? Because I, I believe our monthly pass is, uh, one of the cheapest of the lot.
Yes, we do. And I can pull a copy up on my own screen and, uh, give you some.
Could you also circulate that to the Commission members, please, if you have that available?
Sure. Uh, just, uh, to give you a, a sense verbally, our monthly pass for twenty twenty one, so the year that we're in currently, uh, at a hundred and twenty two fifty is lower than the monthly pass prices in Brampton, Mississauga, York Region, and Toronto. Uh, and higher than the pass prices in Durham Region, Hamilton, Calgary, Lungay, Winnipeg, Laval, Vancouver for a single zone fare, Gatineau, Edmonton, Montreal, Waterloo, and Quebec. It's also, we will share a comparison with how it compares also to some, uh, major U S cities. So you can see where we are in comparison to everyone.
That would be excellent, uh, if you could share that, uh, would be much appreciated. Counselor Brockington, you want to add another question?
Yes, Chair. Thank you for the opportunity. Just high level request, if I may. Given our, our two largest cohort of riders historically have been post-secondary students and federal government workers. Can we get staff to issue a one-page memo or just comment about what their projections are in twenty twenty two for a return to service of these two large cohorts? If, if they have evidence or intelligence that they're going back to work and going back to school, then I'm going to have a lot more confidence with that eighty two percent target. But if we don't have that information, then I think that's where we have to, you know, get into the budget a bit more. So I just want to park that with staff chair. If that's possible, that would be appreciated. Thank you.
Done. Thank you. Okay, is there any other questions? If not, we'll go to Vice Chair Clucey with his motion to, uh, receive table and refer.
Thank you, Chair. Merci, Monsieur le Président.
Be resolved with the Transit Commission.
Be it resolved that the Commission received table?
Is that motion carried? Carry it.
Great.
Thank you. Okay, uh, Counselor McKenney has, uh, a, a couple of notice of, uh, motions that are arising from the Commission's Working Group, uh, Fair Working Group. And I, I'm going to ask the Commission's indulgence to take these today, uh, more as a reporting out from, uh, that working group. And we will, uh, consider and discuss the motions at the budget meeting. If that's an agreement with everybody, I, I would appreciate it. Okay, uh, seeing, uh, nodding heads, then Counselor McKenney, uh, please, uh, go ahead with the three motions.
Thank you. Uh, thank you, Chair. Um, I don't know if staff was going to put them up in any particular order. Or I can just read them up there, answered my question. Thank you. Um, as the Chair mentioned, this is, uh, reporting out from the, um, Fair Working Group, the Transit, that Transit Commission established. So I just want to thank everyone who was part of that, um, staff and, um, and, and yourself, uh, Chair as well for, um, for the work that we were able to do to, to get to these three, uh, objectives. So I'll start with the first one. Um, whereas the Transit Commission at its meeting of November eighteenth, twenty twenty established a working group of its members to work with staff to review and recommend possible modifications to the O C transport fare structure to reduce financial barriers, which reduce the ability to travel for those who need it the most and can afford it the least. And whereas the working group has met, has directed staff to conduct research and has taken into account the expressed views of social agencies providing emergency shelter services. And whereas the working group members agree that increased access to transit services for emergency shelter clients provides a benefit not only to people experiencing homelessness, but also to the city as a whole. And whereas the working group members agree that providing access to the transit system for emergency shelter clients who do not currently purchase transit fares and who cannot in their circumstances afford to purchase transit fares does not represent a loss of revenue to the city. And whereas implementing this program would have no financial impact on the twenty twenty two operating budget and requires only amending the user fee table. Therefore, be it resolved that the Transit Commission recommend council approve as follow, follows. One, that a program be established for the issuance of weekly and monthly transit passes for emergency shelter clients. Two, that these passes be provided at no charge to the social agencies providing emergency shelter services so that they may distribute them to their clients. Three, that the agencies document the procedures under which they will dis, distribute and control the passes through funding agreements with the city. And four, that staff provide up to two thousand of these passes per period in a mixture of weekly and monthly forms that matches the needs of the agencies. And five, that staff develop and implement appropriate procedures to monitor the use of these passes. And six, that schedule C fares for transit services of the Transit Bylaw, Bylaw Number two thousand seven dash two six eight be amended accordingly to create a new category, emergency shelter clients. And be it further resolved that staff monitor the distribution and use of these passes and provide further recommendations to the Transit Commission to expand or revise the program as appropriate. And the second, uh, motion, um, whereas the Transit Commission at its meeting of November eighteenth, twenty twenty established a working group of its members to work, staff to review and recommend possible modifications to the O C transport fare structure to reduce financial barriers which reduce the ability to travel for those who need it the most and can afford it the least. Whereas the twenty twenty two draft budget includes a fare freeze for transit customers who purchased the monthly community pass, the monthly access pass, or the monthly or single ride ECO pass fares. And whereas the working group members agree that the fare freeze has been an appropriate, an appropriate way during the current term of council to respect and address the financial challenges of people with disabilities and low-income residents. And whereas it is anticipated that the twenty twenty two to twenty twenty six term of council governance review would include high-level overview and recommendations regarding the anticipated budget process for the next term of council and that the Chief Financial Officer, Treasurer, would be bringing forward draft budget directions to council early in the new term prior to tabling the, of the twenty twenty three budget. Therefore, be it resolved that the Transit Commission recommend council direct the Chief Financial Officer, Treasurer, General Manager of Transit Services and General Manager of Community and Social Services to undertake a review of the working group's recommendation that the next council consider a fare freeze for the community pass, the access pass, and the ECO pass for the entire term of council. And be it further resolved that staff report back on the results of this review as part of the twenty eighteen to twenty twenty two term of council of governance. So that council may consider this recommendation as soon as possible in the new term of council. And the third, whereas the City of Ottawa's current transit funding model requires transit users to pay fifty five percent of the cost of transit with general property tax revenues paying the rest. And whereas the general, at the federal government's national and international commitments to combat climate change include support for public transit, therefore be it resolved that council direct the mayor and Transit Commission Chair right to the federal government requesting operational funding through the federal gas tax and other channels to reduce the user share of the cost of public transit so that we can reduce or eliminate user fees and encourage more transit use. Thank you. Uh, thank you, Chair. I'll leave those for discussion at the next meeting.
Excellent. Thank you, Counselor McKenney. I, I want to thank staff for all their support for this working group in this effort that, uh, uh, you're seeing the culmination of the efforts. Uh, there were staff from, uh, not only the, um, the treasurer's, uh, area, but also community services. And of course, our own O C transport staff that were very involved in, in bringing this all together over a series of meetings. And, um, I, I just want to thank them all for that. I want to thank, uh, Commissioner Carracato and, uh, Counselor McKenney for all their work in this working group as well. And, um, it was, um, it's one of those things, uh, Commission members, that if we, uh, support this at the seventh, uh, the meeting on the seventeen, we're also really going to be helping some. we're also really going to be helping some folks that need a helping hand. And so it's, it's a good feeling at the end of the day. And Counselor McKenney was very articulate in how we could go about doing this to help people without breaking the budget doing it. So I think it's an innovative approach here. And so I just want to thank everybody involved. So that said, we can now move on to adjournment. Do we have a motion to adjourn, Vice Chair?
Certainly, Chair, that the proceedings of the Transit Commission meeting of November 3rd be adjourned.
Is that carried? Thank you. Okay, we'll see everybody in two weeks' time. And those that are interested, the media availability will start. It's 1:40. It'll start at 1:55.
Thank you, Chair.
Thank you all.
Thank you. Merci.
Bye-bye.